Got it going. Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and call the this meeting to order on September eleventh. Twenty twenty five. And we'll start out with roll call.
John Hatcher. John Hatcher. Peter Nicolason.
And Dave North, um, I don't believe Stacy and John or Jim will be here tonight, but we do have a quorum right now. So will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a mo- we have a motion for approval of the August twenty seventh meeting minutes.
I move.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, all in favor say aye. All opposed? All right, we will uh move into the director's report. Just for, we're gonna change things up just a little bit, I'm adjusted the. The agenda.
Huh? The parking lot topo is at the top.
Yeah, I'm gonna adjust it to what? Where where is the parking lot on?
It's number one.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, then I won't adjust the agenda, so.
Sorry.
The initials mess me up, all right, so. Michael, if you wanna give us a a brief on on the parking lot.
So the Casper Mountain Trail Center parking lots had some drainage issues since uh the county's taken over the site. The initial design was uh very flat. So we had a surveyor go up there and um. Survey the site, the areas of concern. It's been determined, looking at the topo, that we have one percent grade across there um with the gravel site. It's just not gonna flow, and that's part of the issue. So the Parks Department would like to uh. Increase that to two percent, basically kind of cut a. For other purposes, a a shallow valley ditch, uh that drains two percent and and slope. Everything towards that before we bring gravel into to add additional gravel to the site. This would be in front of the um ADA concrete pad and then from their east. Between the light poles and the uh bus loading and unloading. I feel we have. The department has sufficient data to be able to. Grade stake this with the if we have access to laser level, which um we do and um. A member of Roden Bridge and myself uh feel like we can get this laid out and then have one of the operators. Grade to those stakes, um I have. Pretty extensive surveying background as well as some civil engineering background, so I feel we can do this at at no cost. It's just staff and and county equipment cost to do that. But I um I can go a different direction if this board sees that we need to. You know, I don't have money in my budget to contract out somebody to get it done, but uh. This is the most economical way to do it without uh significant cost.
Well, I personally have. A lot of confidence in in what Roden Bridge, what Mike Hagler can do and his experience and the operators and stuff like that. If we if we have that laid out, so we know what that slope is. You know, and cut the grade, that's not real technical, that's pretty easy, and we already know that we don't have the slope, so.
And and what we're looking at here is um. One of the runs is about a hundred and fifty feet, that's from basically kind of by the main door all the way to the east. Edge of the pat um parking lot. And there's a foot and a half cut there, that's where the one percent comes from, so we need to basically get. Another foot and a half of drop over that to get that two percent, and that'll be incremental as you go along up the hill, but uh. That's kind of the change we're looking at, that area does not have any um geotech fabric in it. So that's not a super concern there, the area in front of the ADA concrete parking that does have fabric there and. We need to get a. Probably a foot, maybe three quarters of a foot of drop there. And we really only have. Half a foot of coverage if it's still there on top of that fabric, so. We really have to investigate that and see. What we can do there, if anything, but getting the main run in front of the bus loading. It that's where most of the water stands, and and that's where it bogs up really bad in the spring.
Okay. All right. I don't have any problem with Roden Bridge doing that, just because I know they have the experience and they have the expertise. To get that done, and as long as we're shooting, cutting, fill, that's basically what we're doing and and get that done before we. Get the gravel on it, I personally don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, I don't either, I was up there a couple of weeks ago and got caught in a pretty good rainstorm, so I was able, I was at the Lions camp and. Right around it and I I witnessed it on the the lake and river that was flowing through there, so now I've I've seen it firsthand and. I agree there is something there and um, you know, hopefully this does fix it, if not. Then we know we have to maybe do something to address it next year, but I meant at least this is something we see as a. An economical fix and maybe that's it um that we can do, so I I'm for try trying to do something for that for next year for do for in the springtime.
Michael, so we're not gonna have any cost in this, it's gonna be county time, county material?
Yes, it'd be internal costs, only cost will be the gravel after we do the grading and and that's in the budget.
Yeah, we that's the gravel, sorry, budget, are you gonna bring any fill dirt?
Uh, no, I, we're talking um cutting, you know, half a foot here, foot and a half at the end. Most of it's actually cut, so we'll be taking some material out.
Cut and cut and fill on bringing that up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can bring that up on the upper slope, so it helps.
Yeah, so.
So you are gonna, you're gonna take the cut and then put it fill it on that?
Yeah, we'll balance it out on location um and from my studying the topo, I don't see that we'll be dirt short at all. We'll be dirt heavy if anything, so we may have some material that we need to remove and and utilize someplace else. We were maintaining one of the storm ditches on the north end, my staff was earlier this year, and we utilized that material to fill holes in the ski trails. So um, yeah, we do have.
Well, thanks, thanks for working with Mike Hagler and and your operators and come up with um with solution. I I don't know if it'll just be a temporary solution, but it will hopefully get us through the winter and at least in, I'm sure it'll improve the condition. And that's the main thing, especially since it's not gonna cost the same thing.
Yeah, and as traffic keeps going over the the site, it's starting to tighten up a little bit more, so. I I really feel like next spring is not gonna look like last spring, and and with the drainage, that'll help significantly.
Michael does uh. Not so important before we get the gravel in there, but to again, we may need to get a roller. In there to compact that stuff so that it's tight, so we don't have to worry about that, that'll make a big difference to, you know. It wouldn't take very long to compact that, and it wouldn't take a real big roller, but we definitely, that's something we we definitely probably ought to look into. If we can. Get that compacted once we change everything.
Okay, well, I'll proceed next week with uh getting great stakes in the ground and and starting to move some dirt there.
All right. All right, anything else on that? Thank you for working on that and it that surprised me a lot when I saw how flat those. That what those lines were. So. Okay. What is the nine ten twenty five?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just kind of run through the report real quick?
Yes.
That's kind of these highlights, so yesterday at one o'clock, uh we had an eleven month. On-site, basically a warranty onsite um for the Casper Mountain Trail Center, this is for the extra, the the parking lot. Sidewalks and whatnot, uh just received that report late this afternoon. The highlights of it is uh the contractor come back up and do some some additional seeding, cause some of the seeding didn't take on some of the slopes. We discussed some concrete uh cracks in the sidewalk, they're fairly minor and uh to correct them is a fairly aggressive. You know, basically route it out and seal it and to do that, you're gonna have a ridge in there and with plowing and whatnot. So we decided to leave those, I don't think. All that sidewalk is tied together with rebar and has rebar all through it, so it's it's these minor cracks aren't gonna start heaving and and moving in that manner. And. Trying to think there was. There's some some of the geofabric has has exposed itself, so that's another correction that that their con- uh the contractor subcontractor will. Come up and work on, so um they just sent that uh punch list to Casper late this afternoon. He opened house on October eleventh. I still haven't heard exactly what the food plan is, we have an invite put out there. This is all in in my directory report I provided to the board as well. We'll be getting that invite out Monday, uh I did invite all the user groups, uh if they wanted to set up and kind of um present. Brochures or, you know, if people have questions about lost arrow archers or the snow gypsies or the Casper Nordic Club. All that's been sent out to let them know, I haven't heard back from any of them. But yeah, we're uh we're on board and ready to go.
Is the Casper is on board and they're working with directly with Keith on the food. And so they're gonna, they're gonna work with him as far as getting that taken care of, so that's something we won't. We won't have to deal with on on that part of it.
Yeah, I just wanted to include that information in the invite, so that's that's what I was looking for. That's pretty much it for the Trail Center. Archery range improvements, um. I was at the uh Natrona Natrona Converse Outdoor Recreation Collaborative Steering Committee meeting and general meeting. And um we're gonna be getting a letter of support from them and and they're gonna assist us in. Uh finding some grants to supplement the budget we have for targets. So that uh hopefully we can um do all of the targets this year and do some of the site improvements as well. When I say this year, I guess I mean this fiscal year, cause uh with winter coming, I hate to set up brand new targets in October. And let them settle winter, but we'll probably get them ordered through the winter, have them onsite and stored. At our at our shop so that uh we have them ready to go.
Well, and right along with that, if if the grants come from the outdoor rec group. That money won't be available until July first next year too.
Correct.
So um so that's something we we may have to work within that system and get it taken care of that way.
The next item on the mountain is the uh biathlon agreement. The current operating agreement expires in, I believe, January. So I I'd like to have discussions with this board as to. If we continue with that same agreement and extend it, if we need to revise it, uh what we need to do there. And then uh I have not seen a request for a grooming agreement that we had in the past uh through the county commissioners, so. I don't know if this board wants me to pursue. A grooming agreement or wait until um the club approaches us.
I think there's some items that they, I know there's some items that they need to take care of. That were identified in past inspections. That um those county fire and our building department have readdressed that and identified those items. To be taken care of. There. I'm not sure if that agreement is directly with the parks or if that agreement's actually with the county on some of that stuff.
Well, the current operating agreement is with the county through the county commissioners, because at that time. This board was not um put together yet. But it, I believe it was set for one year and so it does expire, I believe, in January.
It does, I just don't know which board. That'll actually. Go through or if it's something. That needs to be explored by our legal department, so.
My my preference would be that you reach out to them and be proactive, I mean, what we we can anticipate that they're not gonna do anything till the last minute. Or maybe even past the last minute, but I, you know, just kind of see where they're coming on some of these issues with uh. You know, the the checklist or the punch list and and what their intention is, um they were what in front of the. County a month ago.
Yeah.
And, you know, made a number of assurances, and so I I think it'd be useful for you to follow up with them in the next thirty days.
I will uh work on that. Rotary Park, uh the trail. Maps signs have been installed, um the Geologic Trail with their informational signs, they've been installed. I believe September twentieth Rotary will have a a work party up there to install, we um. We cut down on the number of signs with maps on them and to replace those and and. Basically assist in wayfinding. They decided to do smaller arrow signs, you know, and one says the falls this way, one says Bridle Trail this way. And there's quite a few of those that'll go on smaller square posts, uh they're kind of a standard. Type of sign that you see in a lot of trail areas, forest service trail areas and whatnot, um so they'll be installing those. So that'll be uh complete September twentieth, all the all the signs will be redone and and new maps and. QR codes on there for information and things, so we trying to come into this century, I guess. One of the sheriff's deputies um did request because Rotary Park gets. An intense amount of traffic and lots of vehicles. To possibly change it to one-way directional traffic for the summer and require everybody. To go up the paved road and then go down through the picnic area and exit and make that a one-way loop to uh. Kind of deal with some of the traffic control there. So I wanted to bring that to this board's attention and see if that's. What the Parks Department wants to do, I'm not a hundred percent keen on it, we currently have one way. Down through the picnic shelters or picnic tables. And we have the roundabout that you can turn around at the top, so you can stay on the pavement if you want to. I had a thought a while back about the lower parking lot, because to get to the lower parking lot, you have to drive all the way up. Down through the tables and then park. I have not had time to contact Roden Bridge about the possibility of making that a two-way entrance and then just stopping the one way at the end of the parking lot. So it's still one way through the picnic tables, but you could get to the lower parking lot without driving the whole loop.
That that would be my preference, that I, the only parking lot I use is the lower one. Just to avoid that traffic and then just I'd rather take that little trail that goes right up the middle. So I I I would never wanna go all the way up, because there's a lot of congestion right at the top at that upper. Those upper parking spots and then to kind of navigate through the the picnic area just to get. You know, me and my dog to that lower lot, that that seems, I don't know that I'd comply with that law, you know, or those signs.
Well, and I don't think everybody does, um. So I can investigate this a little bit more and present a more detailed plan, but I wanted to, with it being towards the end of the season, I wanted to at least bring it up. You know, I'm not opposed to the one-way traffic, but. There are folks that don't wanna drive the gravel and the gravel is not maintained very often because. Parks doesn't have the equipment to do it very well and Roden Bridge is busy, so um. So I get some potholes and things and, you know, somebody in their Corvette, they came up to do a hike, may not wanna drive down the gravel. To get around, so. So I'll I'll continue that conversation, I'll get some more investigation into it and see what's the most viable option there. Uh, Hell's Half Acre, they were pouring, I believe they're gonna pour the footers for the boardwalk Monday. Uh, the outhouse will probably uh that order will go in, I believe, next week through Visit Casper. I did verify in the field out there that we have adequate width for our road, adequate turn radius and adequate. High clearance uh with overhead power, so we can locate that outhouse over by the picnic sh- shelters where we had planned. And then their uh lake staff will probably be out there, uh we wanna work on the chain link fence and whatnot. However, with the high level of fire hazard, we don't wanna be cutting any posts with grinding wheels or anything, so. Kind of waiting for a little better weather, a little colder weather to get them out there.
Have you got access to a better powered? No, bandsaw, they work great, they'll cut through there really fast.
I think we have a portable bandsaw.
There's no sm- there's no. You won't, you won't have any of the. The sparks with that, it'll cut through and it'll be clean faster.
Well, and to another thought we had, um which I need to speak with Visit Casper is to replace that six-foot with four-foot fence. And just purchase four-foot chain link, which total cost is in the eight hundred dollar range. So that may fit within the grants that way and and do it that way and then.
Okay.
Uh, we'll probably store the other chain link someplace for future use, I have no idea what for, but. Parks Department's getting pretty good at scavenging for things, so. I'll go ahead and move on to Alcoa Reservoir. Currently, the sidewalks in the trailer park are being repaired, some of the sidewalk areas have been poured. My staff's assisting with removal of the old debris. And so that's going on, October fifteenth is the uh annual shutdown for the water. Notices were sent out, uh actually hand-delivered for the new disconnection policy. Uh, my staff is going around tomorrow to tell me which ones did not receive their notice, cause they weren't there. I only have fifty-eight out of a hundred and fifty-plus emails. I did send it to the Trailer Park Association um to see if they could get that out, but. We're gonna find out which trailers still have notices and we will make phone calls uh to let them know about that disconnection policy. I'm hoping by the next board meeting that I will have a draft lot permit. Prepared for the trailers, cabins and clubs, uh so we can start discussing. Proposed revisions on those and and the updates on that as those expire May nineteenth of twenty-six. Sorry, May eighteenth of twenty-six.
Just for the record, I mean, this has nothing to do with that, but just for the record, I just wanna say that we will not be making any decisions. From this point on through the rest of the meeting, we can talk about, discuss and discuss things, but we can't make any. We can't make any uh motions or anything, because we no longer have a quorum, so that's just for the record.
So I got an RFP advertised and out and I emailed it to several of the local. Civil engineering firms and environmental consultants that I'm aware of in the in town as well as in the region. And I will be having a pre-proposal onsite meeting tomorrow. At the cabins, we'll we'll kind of do a a walk-through slash drive-through, just general overview, answer some questions, see if there's any modifications. To the proposal that that come up or questions that need to be answered and send out an amendment if necessary. That's tomorrow, the submittals from these consultants are due on September twenty-fourth. I am putting together a uh. A team to review those, uh I'm looking for some people with some. Technical expertise, I have uh some retired engineers that I've contacted, I'll get some, at least one person from the board, if not two. To be on there, but uh it's nice to have some, a little bit of a general understanding of what the reason for it is and a little.
I'll be, I'll be happy to be on that, because I have worked on pretty extensive extensively over the years with different types of oil.
And and then after we do the open the proposals, a couple of days after they're submitted. Everybody will score those independently and then we will uh. Decide on which consultants to interview out of the selection, uh usually it's the highest scoring. Once, you know, we combine all the scores and see who comes out on top. And in that contract, uh the plan is to award that contract at the. October. Parks Board of Trustees meeting, which is the second Thursday of the month, I can't remember what day that is, October ninth, maybe. So we'll have a, it's a pretty quick process to get through all this. And then uh Vista West Park update, uh I had another meeting with the group about the plan there. And at this time, I, well, I don't have a quorum, so I can't really.
No, but we do have somebody here from there, so if they wanna.
Right, but I was gonna request a letter of support, so I don't know if. Without a quorum.
The two of us can not do it right now, but the two of us can make a statement. And then all we need is one other board member to confirm, and we can do that electronically. So if if we do that, we can we can get that covered.
Yeah, and the letter is support's important um for grant applications, it shows that uh. Donors of the property, I guess, are in support of this project and um it doesn't tie us to any. Contractual requirements or anything, it just says, yeah, we're in supportive and that, um a lot of grants really like to see that. Type of documentation.
Well, just for the record, I am in support of that.
I am also.
So we'll we'll send out a email and have the other three board members respond independently. And whether they're in support or not.
Okay, I'll I'll go ahead and begin drafting that in expectation of a decision, so.
Okay, sounds good.
There any, I guess the next thing's old business, I don't have any old business to.
Do we want? Them to come up and talk about this at this point in time?
That that's up to you, Mr. Chairman, either there or during public comment, I I suggested the Vista West Park. People to uh, you know, at least show up so that you guys know they're they're here and they're interested, so.
He showed up, so. So, Jeremy, did you, do you wanna say anything at this point in time?
Press that button.
Press that button, turn it on, you'll have talk into that, so it's recorded, otherwise.
Just like Michael had mentioned, um just applying for grants moving forward. I think it would be beneficial to have the county's support of this project, so they see. Um, that it can actually go somewhere, so for funding, unplanning. Um, materials, excavation, stuff like that, so. Pretty much all I have.
That that that's that's good enough, you're on the record now.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there any other old business that? The trustees have, I don't, I don't have any old business.
Don't have an update on, we we discussed the. Um we don't have an update on we we discussed the. The plaque and I haven't heard anything back from that. So I don't know what the I don't know what the current status of that is.
I I have not uh I had a conversation uh with Mr. Lamberson. And he was gonna be in touch with Murbax, but I never heard anything more from him.
Well, and that was last I heard was, you know, that he had presented at our our last meeting, just for the record, to talk about that. And he was gonna take that lead on that and I haven't heard anything else at this point in time either on that, so. Um the only other old business, um you know, we did talk. Lodge grand opening and I know you've you've brought this up, but uh visit Casper has agreed to not only. Try to help us out on the on the food budget, but also. For marketing on that so that we can get that word out to everybody instead of just putting it on Facebook or some local stuff. And and try to get that information out there and I I would hope that. Um you know, all the user groups would do the same thing and pass that information around and get that get that out, so. Other than that, I don't have any other old business, so.
Then for new business, uh CWTA um. One of the previous meetings um. Was gonna introduce their board to us uh and and provide somewhat of a project project update. From the Parks Department, CWTA has been. Very essential on on getting our summer trail master plan implemented um at no cost. To parks or the county. Um it uh. We wouldn't be able to do it without them and they've assisted in other projects that aren't. You know, they're, I guess they're more an all trails kind of person instead of just mountain biking because they assist us at Rotary Park. They'll be assisting us at the Cottonwood Dinosaur Trail here in October. Austin assisted me with the drainage issue uh with our culverts at the parking at the lodge parking lot, so. They're a great partner, so uh with that, I'd like to have them come up, introduce their board and uh give you guys some information.
Good evening, Austin.
Chairman, thank you. Director, thank you for the kind words. Um I've got some documents that you guys can have.
Thank you.
So uh I'm Austin Burgess, uh six fifteen South Beach, Casper, Wyoming, um the director of Central Wyoming Trails Alliance, and I appreciate you taking your time to. Uh hear us give more trail updates and ultimately introduce our board. Uh that was a. Request from a month is month ago's meeting and um it got my wheels turning on how we were gonna do that. Um and uh which is with schedules and we were actually able to get quite a few of our board members here. We're only actually missing two. Our whole executive board is here. Um so first off, I'd like to just introduce our board. Um so we have our uh president Tyler Paddock, if you want to stand up. Um and we have bios in, so we went, I went ahead and had everyone do a uh um pretty pretty good bio in there, so you guys can. Read about who we are, um that we're not just enthusiasts, but we're uh local business owners, we're. Uh advocates, we're, you know, uh trail users, we're um dentists in town. I mean, we're kind of have the whole gamut. Of uh what the community kind of has. Um and then we have our secretary, if you want to stand up, uh Ben Smith. Ben Smith has actually been with the organization for a very long time along with Tyler Paddock. Um our treasurer, Colin Rudkin. And we have two uh two of our trustees here as well, our general board members, which we have Ian Walker. And Ben Emery. And the two we're missing, um when you flip through the packet is gonna be Justin Kenner and Joel Simonson. Um again, their information's in there and if you want to speak with them, I'm sure they would love to come up here and talk to you guys too. Um that'd be that'd be great. Real quick updates, uh Michael kind of hit everything as far as our updates. Uh we did today reach one of our biggest goals and that is the actual true connection of the outer loop. Uh we were able to complete that bridge today and get all the trail finishing work done in that lower area, so a user does not have to deviate from trail anymore. Um and they can make that complete connection. So that was a huge milestone for us to be able to complete that project. Um that project was funded by um private donors. Um it was about a six thousand dollar project uh for materials to be able to get done, so. Uh it was huge. It was a huge stepping stone. So now we have the twin bridges is what we're gonna be calling that area more than likely because there's two bridges very close to one another. In a uh you know, really unique drainage and we'll be getting that drainage cleaned up here in the future as well. Um other updates that we have, um let me just, I'm gonna flip flip through. Uh you guys can peruse this at your leisure. Um but a big thing that I wanted to really point out is kind of where CWTA come came from briefly and where CWTA is today. So Central Wyoming Trails Alliance is a registered Wyoming nonprofit, five oh one C three under an umbrella with the. Uh International Mountain Bicycling Association. We're a local chapter of that. With that being an international mountain bicycling association, we are not, and Michael kind of put it kind of perfect. We're not just mountain group of mountain bikers. We do all. Non-motorized trails and that's kind of IMBA's uh focus as well. Hiking, biking and equestrian access trails is really what we're after. Neptuna County um and the other counties that we do serve right now is Congress County. It's vital for us to be able to. Uh understand the needs of all the user groups and be able to get all the users out there rather than be exclusive to just one user group um because. Frankly, there's a lot of people that use the trails that aren't mountain bikers, a lot of them. Um so uh CWT was formed to kind of uh as an idea and and one of these guys can kind of correct me if I'm a little bit wrong because I haven't been with CWTA since the beginning. It was a more more or less a garage idea in twenty fourteen. Uh came an organization officially in twenty fifteen, became an IMBA chapter in twenty sixteen. Um and then was responsible for the implementation of the new. Uh trails that were that we have before the Kalen Master Plan, so that's Eidsville, Copper, um Nellie's. Um the trail network that we had before we started that master plan. Um CWTA was a driving force behind that, obviously a completely different Board of County Commissioners. Um obviously, there was a park advisory board then. Um there wasn't even a parks director um position like what Michael has today, so things have evolved and changed, definitely for the better, I would say. Um and we moved on uh with some with some lofty goals, uh kind of presented the idea of. A executive director with our organization clear back in twenty in uh twenty twenty-two. That idea kind of was uh uh thought about. There wasn't really anybody that was in a job position to be able to do a career change. Well. Lo and behold, um I was available now during a career change that uh and we present, I presented that as I was the board president. So I presented that and uh I don't know, it was like I resigned as board president forty-five seconds later, I'm. Uh hired as executive director type type meeting that we had. Um so my goals, uh my goals for the organization is to lead the organization. Um to new heights that CWTA has not been able to achieve in the past as a volunteer only organization. And we've, I think we've proved ourselves pretty well. Um we've expanded not only uh from the mountain biking trails up on Casper Mountain. But uh improve are starting to improve the bridal trail, even though the bridal trail did get shut down for mountain bike use and that does that that does that that hurts. It sucks when you have a. A multi-use trail that uh was taken away from a user group, but um rather than throwing a fit about it, we uh we just uh, you know, put our heads together on, you know, what we really want to do as an organization and. Came together to say, hey, let's let's make sure that we are trails and that's kind of our slogan is we are trails. It's not, we're not a mountain biking organization. We are trails. Um so we are uh working with Rotary on certain projects and developing a plan to fix a lot of the things. That Rotary Park needs, which is a very, very expensive venture, so. That's gonna require a lot of fundraising on our end um and our community's end to be able to get. That particular project up to the status of what that trail really promotes to the city of Casper, Neptuna County and the state of Wyoming. Beyond that, uh we're moving in other directions all over the place. We're uh looking to doing a project in Barnum, Wyoming. We're looking at. Uh finally doing a project with the city of Casper, uh finally. That happened actually last night for those of you that were at the uh. Uh Incork or the Neutronic Converse Outdoor Recreation Collaborative Steering Committee and General Meeting. We have those agreements starting with the city of Casper now on doing some pretty amazing things on on specifically the mountain bike world too, so it really fits our. Fits our MO really well. Um and then uh the big one that we have is that we were contracted by the um city of Douglas to do a bike park for them and a trail system for them. So we have expanded. We're still staying central Wyoming, so we are staying true to our mission. Um but central Wyoming is fairly vague. Uh so Congress County has been a wonderful organization to work with the commission, the county commissioners there as well. Um as well as the city manager and some of the organizations there and they're actually coming up to help us on our projects too, so it's a great collaboration. And kind of like our name says, Central Wyoming Trails Alliance, we've aligned with a lot of really amazing partners. Um so some of our goals, uh I'll go through it real quick. I don't want to hold everybody here all night long. Um so far this year, uh we've started and completed three and a half miles of trails this year. I won't go over our twenty twenty-four achievements. You guys can read through that. Um we've completed the four and a half mile connector trail on Casper Mountain. Uh we're maintaining over fifteen miles of trails in both Neptuna and Converse and by mean, that's actively maintaining. There's many more miles of trail. That we oversee on maintenance, but actually actively maintaining our fifteen miles. Uh to date, we have uh uh over seventy-five volunteers to assist. I don't have those hours as far as what we have. We're a little down on volunteerism this year, I'll I'll admit. One reason for that is that we were held up in Douglas for a long time on that contract project that we had. Um I'm happy to uh state that one of our goals last year was to be a presenter at the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Summit and we actually were a panelist and a presenter at that summit, so that. Um is really elevating our organization on the state level as well. Um I gotta throw out the uh award from Wyoming Community Foundation, so we are funded from Wyoming Community Foundations. We received a fifteen thousand dollar general operations grant. Receive, we received eighteen thousand four hundred dollars during the YO gives statewide um online giving day, which was absolutely incredible. We had a huge donor at the very end come through, which was the Merritt McMurran. Foundation came through at the end with a ten thousand dollar donation. Um and then we, um I've already talked about this one uh to this board before, but we did receive a seventeen thousand four hundred dollar donation from a private donor for the. Cottonwood Creek Dinosaur Reconstruction Project, which will be starting mid-October. Um on that, we've partnered with the Wyoming Geological Association and the Tate Museum to be our educator. We're not, we're we're trails. We're not dinosaur guys. Um so likely, we're gonna be unearthing some uh artifact and they want to be directly involved with that, so on how to handle that and it may it may put a. Stop to the project. I don't know what that looks like. We'll be dealing directly with Michael Brown. Um and updating this board and uh updating the BOR if necessary as well if we do run into anything that is of significance and that we'll be using our advisors on that project. Um and then this year also, we partnered with the Science Zone, um kind of aligning with our missions uh with a youth mountain bike program. And uh we're actually expanding our youth mountain bike. Uh programs, which is with the Science Zone as well as what's called the Take a Kid Mountain Biking Day, which will be held at the first weekend of October. Um up on Casper Mountain. We're not sure if it's gonna be at the biathlon facility yet, being that they have open range that day now, um or if it's gonna be at the uh Trail Center. And that's a great segue into the Trail Center stuff. Um the other stuff you can read, we're doing another Eagle Scout project and uh we have a whole bunch of other cool stuff going on. I will end with our grooming stuff because I want to end with this winter coming up. But with the uh Trails uh Center uh grand opening coming up, we've been in uh uh really good conversations with uh Casper Nordic Club. And as well as Michael Brown, we have committed to being there um and not just being there and participating. We're um our organization is going to donate the bottled drinks and appropriate. Bottled drinks, uh water, Gatorade, stuff like that um for for the event. We're anticipating a hundred and fifty, so talking with Keith Tyler. Um that's what the food's planned for as well as around a hundred and fifty. Um I don't know if those numbers are gonna change, but we'll stay in communications with that if that changes. Um and then uh to since Nordic Club is gonna be doing their Trail Cleanup Day that day, um and it's the Trail Center, we thought it might be appropriate to do something pretty grand for the community as well. And that's gonna be a ribbon cutting ceremony for all the trails that we've done uh so far up on the mountain. And now this isn't a ribbon cutting ceremony for the completion of the Kalen Master Plan implementation. This is for the trails that we have done. That align with the master plan that we've completed as well as the ones that are in the master plan that we've completed as well. Um so we are gonna be inviting uh Kalen up from Colorado as well for this event, um just out of, you know, good faith. They were the ones that designed the trail. Um put together a great plan for us that we're operating under that the county commissioners approved um five years ago now. I think it's five years ago now. So that's kind of the big updates for the summer that we're involved with. We are starting to wind down. We're trying to get our. Uh trail trail construction completed. Again, we completed the um our biggest bridge to date up there, which is a tw- um it's a twenty-four foot curved bridge. In fact, it's on the cover of that. Um it's a really, really awesome bridge. We already had our first mountain biker ride across it today. And uh so we're winding down, uh kind of winding down, I should say. I'm actually on a on a frantic pace to try to get more trails done this year, so uh we can have some other connectors and. Some cool stuff over at the Trail Center as well, which I'm working with Michael Brown as well on. So we'll be having a trail that's going right off the parking lot there, so it'll be kind of unique. Uh re- unique experience. So you pull up to the parking lot and there's a trail right there. As we move into the winter, uh we have an MOU with uh the uh county commissioners. I believe this with the commissioners, right? It's not with just the Parks Board. Uh or with the Parks Department. Um so that MOU is for trail building and winter maintenance that we do as well and that uh MOU is that uh good handshake agreement that we agreed to. Uh groom a specific selection of trails. Um I will be submitting an update or our grooming update to Michael Brown here soon as well because we are now, now that we have completed our true connector. Um we are going to be expanding from about seven miles of trails um in the past to twelve miles this year. It's a lofty increase in what we're doing. Um but uh. With our new equipment that we have, the trail system we have, it was designed for winter use in mind. I think we can get that done as well as uh working with the biathlon, Rob Ross, or in the biathlon. On figuring out on some grooming loops that I can do with our machine um that uh so we can coexist over there very well. Um because that's gonna be the area of expansion that we're gonna be doing is over there. Um so to conclude, um we do have some projects in the works, um some that are here in Neptuna County, some that are in the city and some which are obviously in Neptuna County, but some that are outside the county as well. So Duncan Ranch Trail Expansion, so anybody that goes down there, um we're looking at doing a trail expansion project there. The Cedar Draw Trails, which is actually an Incork supported project that we're working on. Um Eastdale Park Project, which actually came to uh our uh, you know, to fruition basically last night at our meeting that the city is really wanting us to. You know, partner with them on it on that particular project. The Barnum Youth Bike Park, um archery range collaboration, so Michael was talking about uh. Um some trail work that may need to be done and some tree trimming and stuff. Uh we do take care of all hazard trees up on Casper Mountain within trail corridor. So this still falls within our allowable mission on being able to do those kind of that that kind of work because it is a public use. Non-motorized trail system, even though it's just, it's an archery range, it's still a trail system. Um and then the Harmony Development Trail, um which uh. Is over uh south of town and that's a Platte River Trails uh collaboration project that we're um working with them on as well, so. That's all I have. Um does the board have anything they would like to say? I know I I talk a lot, but I wanted to get through everything and do a really thorough update on what we have going on. And if they don't, do you have any questions for us?
The other thing I I want to say is that I appreciate everything you guys done. I mean. I know there in the past, uh you know, there were a lot of things that you guys wanted to do that we just couldn't do and now. You know, we don't have to worry about that anymore. You guys have taken the ball and run with it and I really do appreciate that and I appreciate everything that's been done. Um around the county because it's definitely, it shows, you know, and there's. I I know when I first got on the park board. There was a lot of things that that we went through and there was a lot of a lot of issues that we had to deal with and everything else and that was back, you know, quite a while ago and. Come a long way. It's a lot, a lot different now and uh I do appreciate everything that. Trail Alliance is doing and you know, and you guys have taken the ball and run with a lot of stuff. I did, I really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Austin, thank thank you for showing up here and you're bored and everything else and I have a son-in-law that is a very big into mountain biking and it uh excuse me, moved away about three or four years ago. And my daughter to Seattle and they do a bunch of mountain biking out there in Washington and he came back here about a month ago. And went up on the mountain and he's like, I can't believe what has happened in three years since I left here. He just bragged on the trails up there and everything else and what you guys done, so. He just bragged on the trails up there and everything else, which you guys done, so I just wanna let you know I don't mountain bike. But he came down after I ran the bike and said, man, he ended up going up the next day and riding more of them. So I just wanna let you know someone's a mountain biker that was here on the old trails and then has come back. Um, he says night and day up there.
That's great.
I just wanna let you guys know that from someone that um really looks for it, coming home when he visits us to go up mountain biking, so.
That's great. That's great to hear. And that's what, that's the goal, right? That's the goal is to make it, make it better and constantly make it better. And uh, you know, tonight I'd like to, since we're in a public forum, I'd like to publicly thank uh our board, uh CWTA's board for supporting uh the organization, for supporting me and believing in uh what, what we're doing and, and being there to support that. Um, some of these guys have been here from the beginning and others are fairly new to it. And it's really incredible the stuff that we're doing and we're, we're really excited for what the future has to come uh for trails for Neptuna County. So thank you so much for your time.
Public comment. You're the only one in here, Tom. Make sure you turn that on. There you go.
All right, so I come before you tonight to, to maybe offer a, a suggestion on this RFP that we have for Alcova Cabin Area for the water and, and testing. Um, I've talked to the director before. He, he's pretty familiar with, with our situation. Three years ago, we um sold the cabin and um we had two of them there cuz it was my wife's dad that left it to her when he died, so we had the funds to, to put in a well. And we don't have like a sink or washer, dryer, any of that. All we wanted for is for fire protection and to be able to use the water for our outhouse so it can be pumped out and, and that's basically all, all we need for. So the, about three years ago, when, when we sold that other cabin, um I talked to the director about getting a well. We'd have the funds to get a well done in, in our lot fourteen. Um, I was told at that time, say, well, get a well permit from the state. Well, I filed, gotta, I'd have a permit from the state to drill the well. Got back with the director and he said, man, there's a moratorium on things right now and we have to do this study. So I was thinking about it and I thought, well, what if we paid for having a well drilled in our lot that you could test? Um, and you know, that's probably eight, ten thousand dollars. Uh, that, that, you know, I, I didn't know if you guys had to drill wells out there to test, but the way lot fourteen sits, it, there's a lot of area that it comes down that way, so I think it would be a pretty good testing area. And, and we already have the permit, so it's not like we'd have to wait for a permit. So it was a suggestion to, to see if possibly we could do that. So if you have any questions.
Talked to the bar or the department of health or any of those?
I have, yes, sir. Um, I talked to Shane uh with the Bureau of Rec and, and I forget the young lady's name with the, with the Health Department. It, the director kinda said I needed to talk with and uh she said, she gave me the, the things about if we needed to put in a, a sewer container or something like that. You know, if we got one of these vendors that, that do it out there now that know what the requirements are, there shouldn't be any problem. Um, and then Shane said, well, we have this moratorium, so I don't know how that interferes with this, so that's why I was suggesting this and, you know, it'd be a good testing point as well as maybe we could get a well.
Well, it may be something that if you do that, you may or may not be able to utilize.
Yes, that's a chance.
I mean, just, just so that we're right up front on that, that there's no guarantee that even if if that's part of it and you're, and you're willing to drill and pay for that well to be tested right there, there's still no guarantee that that's gonna, I mean, as long as you know that right up front, you know, that just because there's a well there, that doesn't mean that you can actually.
So as far as the testing is concerned, we're not using for any type of consumption. We're not running it into our cabin at all. It's just for fire and putting water down an outhouse. That's it, all it's used for, so.
Well, I'm just, I, 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 I don't wanna play devil's advocate, but I just wanna make sure that that's, that's something that there's no guarantee that the BOR is gonna say, yep, okay, that's good or uh, the Health Department, you know, they're, they're gonna be the final say, even if that goes through. So I just wanna make sure that we just lay all the cards out on the table so that just because a well is there doesn't mean it's gonna be able to be utilized. It still has to go through the same process. Um, so, um, but I do appreciate it.
Yeah.
And if that's an option and they, the, they wanna take advantage of that opportunity. I think it's a good opportunity myself, um, but that's something that we'll have to.
Sure.
And obviously, we can't make a decision tonight, so.
Set the other meeting.
Yeah, 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 so.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, on uh Mr. Reader's suggestion, I will reach out to the BR and have a conversation with them and see where they they stand with this with the, you know, intent that this is not gonna be tied into the, the cabin. It's for fire protection and water as well as for potential use for the study.
If you don't mind, I'd like to be part of that conversation with them, just just so I'm informed on everything, so.
And sorry, for the record, I'm Tom Reader, sixteen sixty-five North Buck Creek Road.
All right, thanks, Tom. All right, any other public comment? All right. John, have you got anything that you'd like to add tonight? Okay, all right, and I don't either, so at this point, we are adjourned.